Okay, so with no further discussion, quite unusual, but I'm not making a recommendation, we will just
What about the PLDC?
Do a show of hands. And again, I'm sorry, you know, we're not in discussion with the audience. What we're doing here is voting on the amendment that's on the floor. So again, to be clear, the amendment on the floor from Councilmember Berg, seconded by Councilmember Kobayashi, is to reinsert the Maui GMO item. Okay, very clear, members? Okay, so unusual, but I'm just gonna call for a show of hands rather than making a recommendation. So, councilmembers in favor of the proposed amendment, raise your hand.
No, no, it doesn't, he said it doesn't.
Two?
Two. Post. Okay, motion fails. So we're back to the original.
Can we hear why?
Okay.
Can we hear why? Why'd you take them out, Stanley?
We are all through with discussion, I'm sorry.
No discussion, come on, ask. Nobody's gonna say why.
Package.
Nope, they don't have to say why.
They're trying to get through more than the one.
The reported out for adoption. Further discussion, members.
Councilmember Berg. So for clarification now, because this council
You, you, you.
Is amending what the other three counties did unanimously. We have, I believe, the deadline, correct me if I'm wrong, December 6th, that the ASEC package has to be culminated. Is it December 6th, the final day? In other words, all the neighbor islands now, if this passes today, if this passes today, where we're taking out the other three counties directives, then the other three counties have to then conduct business and now adopt Honolulu's 12-319. Because if the other three counties don't pass 12-319, there is no ASEC package being advanced to the legislature. So I just wanna make sure we get this correct. There was concern that if I'm advancing a change, this is gonna throw everything kittywampus, capicahi. So what we're actually doing now is rather than, rather than not adopt the other three counties, I'm almost done, rather than not adopt the other three counties initiative, we are now requiring, if this passes, we're requiring the other three counties, then they gotta have a meeting, take action. And they're gonna have to hear from all the other counties why it is Honolulu did what they did to that.
Councilmember Berg, I can clarify. We already clarified that it is those items that all four counties approved moves forward. So the fact that we did not approve three of them, or however many, does not jeopardize the other items.
Okay, that's, okay, I'm glad you said that. So the clarification is that by taking out two items, GMO, PLDC, by taking them out, that means the other three counties, what we advanced in 12-319, is hold.
The other items that were approved by all our
Is hold. Okay, okay, thank you.
We don't call this corruption.
Okay, we're back to the main motion, so again, the chair's recommendation is to adopt Resolution 12 S 319, but further discussion, members? Yes, are not amended.
Why is everybody so quiet? Oh, God.
Okay, any objection? Oh, I'm sorry, council chair. My, it's a long day.
Thank you, Chair Harry Moore. With regards to the GMO issue, I know it's a very emotional and controversial issue. I can say at the beginning, this is our sixth, six or seven year on this particular matter, and in the first few hearings we had, I didn't support labeling at all. You didn't support it, I can tell you that.
You say why?
Because I just thought that the data wasn't conclusive. But let me also say, let me finish, and again, this is not a discussion with the audience, this is a discussion for the members. You know, but with the information received from a lot of, especially the reputable people who've submitted us, a lot of information, a lot of factual information, and even in speaking with some of the companies who engage in this practice, I think they see the light coming in terms of labeling GMOs.
But you all don't.
We prefer the audience not interrupt while we're speaking because we know they're speaking.
Yes, I would ask the audience to please refrain, we are in meeting, members.
You know, that's what makes it so difficult. It's because of that type of attitude that makes it very difficult, I think, for all of the members to take heart of this particular issue. But council well knows for the members who sat here, we did adopt a resolution, Resolution 12-57 FP1. And the position the council took is that this should be addressed at the federal level. I think we all believe that, you know. And that's the position I continue to vilify by, I support GMOs equally, but I think it should be addressed at the federal level, for consistency across the board. You know, whether you agree with me or not, it's irrelevant.
I know, it is irrelevant.
I want to give my own opinion.
And once again, I urge please refrain from speaking.
That's why, that's the position I take. With regards to the PLDC, I don't think any of us are happy with some of the exemptions they created, especially with respect to the council. I think, but as Councilmember Kobayashi had started to say, I think you've seen the momentum shift with regards to the state legislature. You have the Senate President initially saying that he's gonna introduce a series of bills, either to repeal or to amend the PLDC Act 55, to address a lot of the issues brought up by the general public with respect to this issue. And then recently, you have the very author of the bill who's saying that he is in, he may consider repealing himself. And now you have the governor also saying that he's willing to consider the testimony, or asking the department to consider all of the testimony before moving any further on this particular matter. So I didn't think it was necessary for us to have to advance that, seeing that there already is momentum at the legislature to address this issue. And I think all of us, it behooves all of us as councilmembers not to have our own individual meetings with the key legislators to express our concerns. And now that we have four state legislators, I think it behooves us not to take advantage of their expertise and their interactive relationships to express those concerns now that they're sitting on the other side of the table. So, you know, that's the reason for me, I'm only speaking for myself. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for sharing that. I think that people do have a right to know about where we stand, the reasons why we voted as we did. And, you know, democracy and governance is messy and can be emotional. I do appreciate the fact that the people took the time to come and testify, especially our friends from the neighbor islands to come and testify on these matters. And I know that it's quite emotional. And I have some personal stake in this matter myself. My wife is a best cancer survivor. My mother died of a very rare cancer, gallbladder cancer. Although we don't have the, I did not conduct biopsies to determine the reasons for this, but after hearing some of the testimony here, it does give me some pause to consider whether or not this might be something that, as I continue to be educated, I can come to understand that now. Taking a look at what happened in the California experience in the last election, and I'm trying to determine why it was that a measure for labeling GMOs lost its momentum when I thought it would pass the California electorate. The polls had indicated there was very early support for GMO labeling. Now, the argument is that because of the big money that came behind in the anti-GMO labeling bill, that that was the reason why people voted the way they did in California. But I will also argue that big money doesn't always win. You can talk to the Republicans about that.
When in here.
And the questions about whether or not their favorite candidates for the White House and for the Senate lost in spite of overwhelming monetary support for their campaign. So big money doesn't always win. I think what actually does win the day, and I would like to have an opportunity to speak to those who are still willing to speak to me under this vote, is how we go about trying to educate the electorate, and making sure that there is more than the people that is inside this room to get educated on this issue of GMO labeling. It is very difficult for us to advance a measure when we haven't heard from others. We have heard from the usual people who have come to testify in these hearings. But I have yet to hear, and I would have wanted to hear, if somebody had taken the time to bring in the management of Kaiser Permanente, it would have been very instructional if we had heard from them today. But no one took the time to have them come here today. Explain to them why they came up with this disclosure for their patients. I would have wanted to know that, and that might have swayed some votes. For those of you who are trying to get this issue passed, you need to try to get more of your allies into this room, okay? Now, I think what we need to do is to try to get more of an educational campaign going. So before you advance the cart before the horse, what you need to do is to get more people outside of this room educated as to why we need to get labeling measure passed. And if I could also add too, that the labeling measure that was advanced to the California electorate was not done properly. There were too many exemptions on that thing, and after a while, people thought that this was not something that would have advanced your cause, because there were way too many exemptions on the GMO labeling bill that went before the California electorate, and in fact weakened your position. So I'm leaving the council here at the end of the year. My entire campaign fund got wiped out, by the way. I distributed all to churches and schools. I am not beholden to anybody, I haven't had a fundraiser in years. So be that as it may. I think what we need to do is try to get the people educated as to why we need a GMO labeling bill, and people outside of this room, you're talking amongst yourselves.
No, but you're talking amongst yourselves.
The way, and the reason why I also say that is not just because of legislation. I think when people talked about capitalism, you know, supply and demand, if the people are educated enough to demand that there be a choice, and it comes to a labeling, then you have that ground full of support. I'm trying to give you some tips on how to make this thing work.
Thank you.
And I'm doing this, I'm risky, but I have people that are members of my chamber. So anyway, in spite of that, I'm trying to tell you how we might be able to get this thing moving again, beyond what it is that we have been experiencing here at the council. So with that, Mr. Chairman, and also a word on PLDC, have I cleared, Mr. Chairman? With respect to the PLDC measure, when I was the chair of this council, I was aware of legislation moving across the street. In its original form, for those of you who've been following this measure carefully now, it was something to do with public schools' lands trust. If those of you who remember testifying on this measure, it was House Bill 952 and Senate Bill 1385. It was restricted only to those lands on school property. The council and this mayor were concerned about those measures advancing. Because if you don't know already, much of the land under our schools are actually city property. And the council, if not the mayor, had a right to try to make a determination of what the future of those lands are gonna be. So I watched those two bills very carefully. Then they morphed into what is now called Act 55. In fact, this council took a position against House Bill 952 on Resolution 1160. We voted unanimously to have that bill shelved. So this council has taken a keen interest in what we do with public lands. So to say that we don't do that by reflection of this vote is not true. We have been watching this very carefully. Now, when we did vote on Resolution 11-60, there were particular concerns that were attached to those two bills. Those two bills, those concerns are not reflected now in Act 55. We wanna make sure that when the legislature or the governor begins to start to take a look at it, that we will once again address those concerns. In any form of legislation, the PLDC will come before the legislature for consideration. I'm sure that the chairman will be paying close attention to this matter. So that is not to say that this council is acting with disregard for the people's health, for the people's trust when it comes to its lands. We are watching it very carefully. You just asked, you just heard me advance some powerful hints, I think, trying to deal with the GMO labeling. I saw the latest study by the French professor. It came up with, it was a study on cancer with mice. It was the first study that came up with a long-term look at the effects of GMOs on land animals. We have not seen yet a study, the data that the chair is looking for, on humans, long-term. What that study should have done is initiated more studies, long-term studies on humans, and we have yet to see that yet.
That's us.
We're already paying for it.
That's us.
That is not done by the stakeholders. What we need is a third-party neutral. The French professor who gave the study, the latest study, is well-known to be on the side of GMOs. So we need a third-party study. If the resolution had called for a study so that we can make an informed decision and have data to back us up, and when people go to the markets or to the restaurant, they say, "Why is this label here?" You haven't taken the time to make a determination and the basis on fact to advance a label. What gives you the right to label something without any backup data? And that's the concern we have here. I needed to show people that there is hard science behind this labeling, and I haven't seen it yet. You need to ask third parties to advance a long-term study on humans so that we can make a determination and have these who are labeling food. Until that time comes, the state, the health department won't do it either. And they got their hands tied because they are trying to make sure that whatever they advance in the legislation such as this, that they have the hard data to back them up.
Who would sign up?
I'll try to help you out there with the council in that regard. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it especially.
Who would sign up today?
Thank you, Councilmember Chang.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, as Chair Martin has already discussed, the GMO issue has been addressed at great length at this council this year alone. We've received thousands of pieces of testimony, both oral and written. And I wanted to take the moment to thank all those who took time out of their days and their busy schedules to engage with the political process in this way. I personally was extremely impressed by several of the letters that we received. I appreciated that many of the testifiers cited statistics, footnotes. I thought many of the letters were extremely well researched. They proved very, very helpful toward deliberations. I was also simultaneously disappointed by a lot of the testimony, both oral and written, because I think certain, you know, claims and representations were made that were clearly untrue and that really did not help to advance the discussion. And I'm just gonna stay for the record right now that I have never received contributions from any GMO-related companies. But even if I had, I think it is our responsibility and our duty to think of not our contributors, but of the voters first, our constituents. And when considering a question, we should consider it on merits, on pros and cons, on a policy level, and not on any type of, you know, emotional level. And so when it comes to the question of GMO regulation, I find myself, you know, unconvinced that the city and county or that the state should be the organ involved. First of all, Chair Martin mentioned, the agency most appropriate, best suited with the most expertise in regulating genetic modification of organisms. It's at the federal level, it's the FDA, and this council has already expressed by Resolution 12-57, an opinion to the FDA that the FDA has received. So in that respect, you know, we've already engaged, quite recently, the primary agency and decision-maker on this subject. Second, what I would also say is that there's no, to me, you know, to me, one question that, you know, well, the regulation of GMO organisms as a whole is actually a much broader issue than these labeling requirements address. You know, if one doesn't like pesticides in one's food, that is, that, you know, one should be arguing for pesticide labeling. If one doesn't like, you know, certain types of genetic manipulation as opposed to others, one should argue for those types of labeling. But if we're gonna talk about specifically, you know, people who are concerned about their diets, their lifestyles, their health, you know, there are undoubtedly many people in Hawaii and around the world who have opted for a diet free of GMOs, as there are people who have opted for a diet free of meat, for a diet free of animal products, for a diet free of, you know, non-kosher food products, for example. And, you know, as for those people who have opted for a GMO-free diet, I again observe today, as I have in the past, out of the thousands of letters and the thousands of oral testimonies, I have yet to hear from somebody who, having made the decision to go GMO-free, cannot find GMO-free products to eat. And the reason for that is simple, it's because GMO-free products, organic products, pesticide-free products are more widely available now than they ever have been in history, at least since I've been aware. They're available not only at health food stores like Whole Foods or Down to Earth, they're available in conventional supermarkets like Foodland, they're available at Walmart, they're available at farmers' markets. And as far as I can see, I see no shortage of products that are very clearly and prominently labeled organic. And that being said, when the call is for labeling of GMO-free products, it seems to me that that labeling is, first of all, already there, and second of all, growing at an extremely rapid pace. So on that specific issue, I don't feel that there is the additional need for government intervention there. That being said, you know, I anticipate in the future that it will become even easier to adopt a GMO-free diet and lifestyle. And as it has become easier to this date, and, you know, will, if anything, reduce the need for government intervention in that respect. So that's why I don't think that this would be an appropriate measure for the council to provide the ASEC package and advance to the state legislature. And one final note, Mr. Chair, is my sincere hope that those who are passionate about this issue will engage policymakers at the federal and the state levels who are writing laws and regulations as we speak that do, in fact, make the difference. Adding the council voice here undoubtedly is, you know, consequential, but we don't have the power to wave a magic wand and to require labels of GMO or any other type of food product. And so, you know, in some respect, I feel that the energy would be more productively spent in other venues. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair. That's why I support the original version of Resolution 12-319.
Thank you. Further discussion, members?
Clarification.
Councilmember Berg?
A clarification. To my understanding then, if we take heed to some of the objections, if somebody brought somebody from Kaiser Permanente on December 5th, if they multiply and clone themselves and come 300 strong on December 5th, some of you may change your mind. What I just gathered today for clarification is that 12-319 gets adopted on December 5th. The way I understand the ASEC package is that the deadline is December 6th. Such communication goes to the state legislature. So there's another bite at the apple on December 5th. Everybody here could be disgruntled and disappointed and go away. Or the testifiers could say, clarification, Chair, they're gonna take heed, they're gonna get Kaiser Permanente here, because I read their testimony. I got it, this package. I don't know why someone has to show up. It works for everyone else, you can just send an email and it's, oh no. But gosh, they gotta show up. So if that's the case, what you had today was four or five hours of deliberations. My comment is, this is not a threat, but it's very likely that by not taking heed to the statements made today, which all were unanimous, not one in opposition, all unanimous, is that if that doesn't work, what I just gathered from the clarification purposes for December 5th is, this pile needs to be this high. So that 10th grader, the 10-year-old child, he needs to tell his whole school. And the whole school needs to show up, school by school, neighborhood board by neighborhood board, and everybody take this pile and make it 12 inches tall, bring Kaiser Permanente here on December 5th. And I just hope then, because I'm so confused when I leave here today, what's it gonna take? And this is not disrespect to my colleagues, but I just don't know what else it is that when you got a 100%, we want a right to know, and they lose. I need to go back to my eighth-grade civics class. So December 5th, Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, they can come back tenfold. So if you think four to five hours was a lengthy discussion today, bring your sleeping bag on December 5th.
Bring your tent, I'll bring it.
Make a difference.
Councilmember Berg, I think you're correct. However, I'm going to say what I said twice in your committee meetings before this, that my hope is that committees will do the detail work to make our council meetings go more smoothly. So I hope we don't get bogged down for six hours on one item, rehashing what we went through in committee. So I will just leave that as it is. Further discussion, members? Councilmember Manham?
Just really briefly, I think if I could just make a request to enter the Council Chair Martin's comments as well as Councilmember Chang's comments as if they were my own, into the record, on the GMO issue. If I can make that request, Chair. And on the PLDC issue, having come from the legislature, I did vote for it in the past, but I've also said it publicly that I think that, as we were going through the process at that time, I recall that it did, it didn't quite make it through the public comment period. And I do know that the legislature, I'm sure, would be taking it up this year. And sometimes it's a good thing that when we don't urge the legislature to do stuff, they take it up on their own, and I'm hoping that's the case with both these issues. And those are my comments, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Further comments, members? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Chair. Strong support of the measure in front of us as recommended by our delegate to the state association of counties, Councilmember Chang, first Councilmember Chang. On behalf of the city council, I'd like to thank you for your work in representing us in ASEC. And I'm also proud to serve as your alternate as a delegate to ASEC. That said, Chair, I think this council did take a strong stand in supporting labeling of GMO products when we supported Resolution 12-57 for draft one back in May of this year before the full council. And with that resolution, it urged the United States Food and Drug Administration to require labeling of genetically engineered foods. And, Mr. Chairman, this is the proper realm to address this issue. As many of our current colleagues who've come to the city council from the state legislature know, oftentimes the requests that this body makes to the state legislature often fall on deaf ears. Now, that's not to say that those who are interested in this particular issue cannot go back to the state legislature and take the issue directly there, if in fact they wanna do that. In regards to the PLDC, Mr. Chair, I have some concerns, very grave concerns with the PLDC, primarily in regards to home rule for the counties. Our home rule in regards to zoning, for example, is a concern of mine with PLDC. I also have some grave concerns regarding PLDC with our ability to provide for adequate infrastructure for certain developments that may be exempted. That said, the primary introducer of the legislation creating the PLDC has already stated his intent to introduce legislation to possibly abolish the PLDC. The governor has also stated that if it's the legislature's will to abolish the PLDC, that he is absolutely comfortable with it. Chair, I would like to thank folks who did take the time to come down here and to share their sentiments with us. But at the same time, I'd also like to state, when folks presented their testimony to this body, we sat here, we listened, we actually took the information that was presented to us, not just here in this room, but those who took the time to write in to us and those who also took the time to email us. And you know, Chair, some of the communications we received, as in the past, very disheartening to read, because some folks showed absolutely no courtesy whatsoever in addressing this body. because some folks showed absolutely no courtesy whatsoever in addressing this body. And, you know, Mr. Chairman, I'm not speaking as a council member here, I'm speaking as an individual, as a human being. You want, folks want aloha, they want to be treated with aloha. Guys, give it back. Sending nasty grams, nasty letters, leaving nasty phone messages, folks, they get you nowhere. They get you absolutely nothing.
Not everybody did that.
Absolutely, exactly, a lot of folks did that. A lot of folks did that. And that, Mr. Chairman, that has absolutely no positive effect whatsoever. I think all of us as individuals have the ability to communicate with each other with respect and with aloha. And all I would ask in return is that when people address folks, whether they be elected officials or whether they be people from everyday life who may have differences of opinion, respect the opinions of others. Show some love, Paul.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson, very well said, thank you. Okay, final thoughts? Okay, I'd just like to add my thanks also to Councilmember Chang for his hard work with the ASEC. Thank you. Okay, so once again, reminder, so the chair recommends that resolution twelve dash three nineteen be reported out for adoption. Any objections?
No objection.
One objection, so long. Okay, so hearing just one objection from Councilmember Berg, it's over, thank you. Okay, we're not done yet, folks. We have six, I believe it's six executive session items.
That's it.
Shall we just state these three items here?